I now call to order this July 10th Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by our Pastor David Lorenz from First Baptist Church. And if you'll remain standing after that, the colors are going to be presented this evening by the Knights Templar of Park Place Commandery number 106.
Will you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we're gathered here tonight for our council to discuss and decide on important and crucial matters regarding to our city. And so tonight, we ask that these discussions and the process of decision-making would be done with grace and humility, and that as decisions are made, Lord, we pray that they would be done for the highest good for our community. We're grateful that we live in such a wonderful community and ask your continued blessing upon her. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. See if I can find a good mic. Color Guard. Ladies and gentlemen, you may drop your salute during the ode to the flag. We direct your attention to the flag of our beloved country. It is always stationed in the east where it is accorded position of highest honor. It is a constant inspiration to every lover of his country through every true citizen. It demands unswerving loyalty and wholehearted devotion to the principles of which it is the glorious representative. It is the majestic symbol of freedom under constitutional government. Beneath its protecting folds, liberty, equality, and fraternity have become the heritage of every citizen, while the oppressed of many nations have found peace and happiness in the land over which it floats. The flags of mighty empires have come and gone, but the stars and stripes remain. Alone of all flags, it expresses the sovereignty of the people, which endures when all else passes away. Speaking with their voice, it has a sanctity of revelation. He who lives under it and is loyal to it is loyal to truth and justice everywhere, so long as it flies. Government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth. Ladies and gentlemen, please resume your salute for the posting of the colors. Color Guard, post the colors. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a pledge to Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the heat of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Sir Knights, carry swords. About face. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you as Park Place Commandery for having the opportunity of presenting the colors tonight. I'd like to introduce the team tonight. We have Past Commander Hal Smith, John Bram, our Generalissimo, our current eminent commander, Dean Bryant, myself, In the Grand Warder, the Grand Commander of Texas, Chris Little, Sir Knight Patrick Callahan is our Senior Warden. Junior Warden, I tried to give you a promotion. Ken Potoff, Past Commander at Park Place, and Tom Boone is the Senior Warden. There he is. Did you have any presentations for us? That's it. All right, we're done. Sir Knights, to the west, right and left face. All right. Continuing on. Counselor comments and reports. I'll start by just again thanking city staff and the Fourth of July Committee for a fantastic Fourth of July celebration as always. For those of you that weren't there, we celebrated our 128th consecutive Fourth of July here in Friendswood this past Tuesday, and I think there were more people out there for the parade than I've ever seen. And James Tony, hats off to you, sir, and your staff, Parks Rec, magnificent job. So, thank you very much. Michael Boyett.
Have a good second. I just have one. On June the 24th, we lost Mayor Emeritus Tom Reed. He had been the mayor of Pearland for more years than anybody can remember, and I just wanted to mention that to the group, and we sent our condolences to our neighbors to the north of Pearland. Okay.
Councilmember Crawford.
Oh, gotta turn it on. Okay, just wanted to mention a couple of things. The Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District appointed Lonnie Moffett to the only open position that was at the Galveston County Commissioners Board. So they are fully seated and they're getting ready to get things done. I think they have, we have an interlocal agreement to work out this evening with them. So, that's good. Last month, at the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee meeting, we hosted the Dickinson-Bio Steering Committee, and Elmer Scott from Harris County Flood Control District gave us a great presentation on tunneling. They've done studies now, and I think they're looking at eight possible tunnels for Harris County, Houston, Harris County area. I think they're the only major city in Texas that does not have a tunnel, and it's pretty interesting. Seven of them look to me like they were going to discharge their water into the Ship Channel, and one was going to be right around our South Belt Detention Basin, which would actually take the water in from there and run north. So, apparently that's kind of what they're looking at, and unbelievable is the amount of money that's going to take to do that type of tunneling, and I think they're talking in the neighborhood of $130 to $150 million a mile. So, we have reached out to Captain Aaron Brown of the Corps and Kelly Burks Cope, and we're going to try to get them to do a presentation on the coastal project and where they're at on that. We're hopefully going to try to get that done, if not by the end of this year, maybe next year, set that up. So, things are moving in the drainage district area, and Samantha will be giving her a report to us this evening, so we're going to be all caught up. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Councilmember Matranga.
Nothing additional.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll say something maybe with the nine A.
Nine A. Okay, good, good. All right, I don't have any cards for public comment, so we'll move on past that. And we'll have our annual report from West Ranch Management District presented by Heather Trachtenberg with ABHR Counselor.
Yes, good evening. Hello, I'm Heather Trachtenberg. I'm the attorney for West Ranch Management District, and do have a PowerPoint that I sent over. Do I control it? Yeah. All right, I don't know which button. There we go, to the right. There we go. All right. So, here we've got, you can see we have one vacancy that we're going to be handling this evening, I think. And thank you for your recent appointment to our, we lost, we sadly lost a board member, but to a very good cause, so we'll continue on there. Here's a map of the district. We've got, this is just some short updates. Residential development is complete. We still have these red commercial areas that are undeveloped. The Klein Elementary School is ready, and the HOA maintains a lot of the green space, so does the district, and we work closely together to maintain all the green spaces around the district. Here's just our historical tax rates. You can see, if you look at the column all the way over on the right, we've just continued to decrease our tax rate while continuing to maintain and improve the district. Here's our ongoing drainage maintenance update. This is something that the board takes very seriously. We have not had, despite our flood events, we have not had any flooding in the district, which we're very proud of. The system has worked as it's supposed to. We've just continued, you know, over the past four years, the district has spent approximately $125,000 over and above just routine maintenance in order to make sure that all of our components to our drainage system continue to function as they should, because they know we'll have more rain events to come, so that's definitely a priority for the board. These are sort of some recent things that we've done in the past year or so, working with the West Ranch HOA to continue to improve common areas. Sidewalks for the elementary students, that was an important one. Those will be going in shortly before, goal is to get them in before the school year starts. So, shouldn't be, I think we should, I think we can get it done. We, in partnership with the HOA, did install flock safety cameras at the entrances to the district, which was something that the Friendswood Police Department came to our board meeting and kind of asked, you know, talked about how the city has put them in and requested that we partner with the HOA to get those installed. We've replaced benches and trash receptacles, repaired our Lake Miss Bridge, and increased maintenance of some of our rooms. So, these are all projects that are ongoing. Goals and objectives for the board, remaining focused on lowering that tax rate, that's an important one for all of our residents. And the Friendswood Development Company is still seeking a potential developer for those commercial districts, but there's nothing currently in the works, so nothing to report on that. And then, any questions? Short and sweet. And I do just want to express the district's gratitude to Councilmember Matranga for his service on the board. Did a very, very committed and hands-on director, so we're very grateful.
Thank you. My pleasure to work with you.
Great. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks Heather. Appreciate it. Okay, item seven, work session topics. A, receive an update regarding the drainage projects in the city of Friendswood, presented by Samantha Heritos, Assistant Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Samantha Heritage, Deputy Director of Engineering, and I'm going to give an overview of the city's drainage and flood control projects. This map, I actually need to update a couple of the titles, but from north to south on Clear Creek, the purple area at the north is the Friendswood Regional Stormwater Detention Basin. The blue area is the Harold Whitaker Storm Basin. The light blue area is our Forest Bend Detention Project, and then the red and yellow are the Wickham In-Line Off-Line Detention. I'm going to go into each of these, this is kind of just an overview. And then, further down, the large blue area and the light green area is Black Hawk In-Line Off-Line. This one and the Wickham are not under engineering or construction at this point, they're more of, you know, longer-term projects. And then, the orange area is the Frenchman's Creek Green Area, and then the star is the utility, the utility relocation project. Then going up to Cowards Creek, the tiny purple areas on the north side are the Castlewood Detention Basins, and not on here that I'm also going to talk about a little bit is our Deepwood Flood Control Project. If anybody wants to see where any of these are, I can flip back and, okay. The Harold Whitaker Detention Basin Expansion, this is not a city of Friendswood project, but I thought this was important to discuss because we partnered with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for the original in-line detention pond here. So, we originally had about 1,000 acre-feet of detention in that area, and they are looking to expand this for up to an additional 38 acre-feet of storage. This is located at the Imperial Estates neighborhood, or the, you know, formerly the Imperial Estates neighborhood, at the confluence of Clear Creek and Mary's Creek. Right now, they have hydraulic and hydrology modeling underway on the engineering side, and they're looking at, you know, whether it's feasible to include additional capacity, and if so, what types of outfall and pipe replacements would be required. Additionally, an Army Corps of Engineer permit would be required because they would be changing outfall into the creek.
Samantha, is that all going to be taken care of by pipes and outfalls, or is there actually land that they're going to expand?
I am not 100% sure. Yeah, I have not heard.
In speaking with the board member on the district, they're looking at digging a section of the surface area even further lower than the current elevation has it. That may require a pump system or another outfall pipe at a lower elevation to help drain it. So, basically digging a hole within the already shelved area.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't certain.
The potential for extra 38 acre-foot storage, is that the little top that's outlined in blue, and it's kind of shaded, is that, are they expanding the area or just deepening?
So, the areas that are highlighted in white include all the buyout properties from Tropical Storm Allison, and then the big parcel to the white just south of the blue area you're referencing is the original 1776 park boundaries. The areas that are below between that and the bunny ear, so to speak, were outside of Imperial Estates originally, part of 1776, it's sort of like an old oxbow as Clear Creek makes its way over there. The expanded area is going to be anywhere within the white, it's not in the bunny ear area. No, ma'am.
Frenchman's Creek Greenspace, this is a community block development grant project. It's actually part of, it was part of an acquisition grant that also includes acquisition at Deepwood. And I'll mention that again a little bit later, but this is, so it was part of a CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant from Hurricane Harvey. The funding from that should cover the acquisition Frenchman's Creek and Deepwood. So, the location for this project is the Poly Ranch subdivision, at the, where the Frenchman's Creek Townhomes were situated. So, at this point, the front, or the properties that were closest to the creek, the two closest to the creek were part of a grant that the city of Friendswood received, and then the three buildings that were further away from the creek, closer to Pine Drive, were part of a CDBG DR grant that Galveston County received. So, for completed activities on the city of Friendswood side, Buildings Four and Five have closed out. Right now, there's a demolition contractor procured, and so demolition should start here in a little bit, and asbestos inspection was pending, it may, that may have been updated since, because this was from a week or two ago. On the Galveston County side, they've completed asbestos testing, and their demolition is estimated to occur within the next three months. So, on both sides, it's really wrapping up, and then the remaining items would be hydro-mulching the area and project closeout, which would, which would include the HOA turning the property over to the city and then closing out the grant with the GLO, the General Land Office. So, these pictures have been up here before, this is Forest Bend. I was waiting to get pictures because we're nearly complete, so the next update, I'll have some nice, pretty pictures, maybe a drone aerial as well. Forest Bend is another community block development grant, disaster recovery grant. In addition to the original grant amount, we have recently received approval for an additional $300,000 from Harris County. A lot of that $300,000 from Harris County was kind of luck, the timing was right, and we needed it for the lighting portion of the project because we didn't have the entire project covered. So, at this point, we're looking pretty good financially. The Forest Bend subdivision, the, this is an existing homeowner-associated park, so we are going in, we are adding in, I think it's 53 acre-feet of offline detention. It's kind of meandering, so they, it's not just one detention pond, there's several, they feed into each other. There's a nice new concrete trail system and solar lighting. At this point, or this was of June 14th, they are 83% complete. They expect for construction to complete in August. They had 83,000 cubic yards excavated, which I think most of the excavation had been completed at that point, so it was comparable to about 25 Olympic pools. They were working on wrapping up, lining the ponds with clay, and there were a few final touches they needed to do for the trails that they couldn't do until the excavation was done, so they're, and they're working on that at this time.
Samantha, who's going to maintain this property, these basins, when they're completed?
Just, the city of Friendswood is going to take over maintenance obligations for it. We executed a license agreement with the Forest Bend HOA a number of months back to utilize their property for this drainage project, and as a condition of that agreement, the city is taking over maintenance.
So, will we maintain the whole park or just this area where the basins are?
The areas where the basins are and the new, new lighting and trail system, their original playground equipment and stuff will remain their responsibility.
Morad, I think years ago, we had swapped property with that HOA. Now, we have an active dispatch of fire station, don't we, there? Or did we move that?
Yes, sir. Back in 2000, I want to say 10 or 11, we had owned the Civic Building that's next to their pool for a number of years, and they had owned the actual Fire Station Three building. We did eminent domain because they weren't able to get consensus among their HOA members to sell us that property, and in exchange of purchasing that property, we relinquished the Civic Building to them so that they had a facility to meet it.
But we still have our fire station there that's actively helping Harris County side.
Correct, correct. And in the future, the fire station may get resituated if there's a more advantageous location when it's time to replace that fire station, but for right now, that's an active fire station.
All right. Next, so we've talked about this one, but it's been a while since we discussed it here, this one and Deepwood. So, the Clear Creek Utility Rack, this is located down in, it's in between the Poly Ranch subdivision and then on the other side, Terabella. You can, you can see the white line crossing the creek for the exact location. The, the water treatment plant, the Blackwood Waste Water Treatment Plant is on the northeast side of where this is located. So, so, long story short, both this project and Deepwood, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit, were kind of held up on the environmental review side, which is mandatory for, they're both community development block grant projects, and so they have to go through the federal environmental process, and there were several archaeological sites in the vicinity, so it doesn't look like it's going to be a problem, but it just took a while to get it through the review to make sure that we weren't going to be harming any areas that we needed to stay away from.
So, once you're complete, will there be any above-ground structures there?
For this one?
As part of this utility rack?
Yes.
Well, the three lines that currently go over the creek will be removed and go underneath the creek instead, but we do have a lift station nearby and some, some equipment that's on further, further on the higher end of the bank that will remain, but everything relative to the creek will be below the creek.
Okay, thank you.
So, we've completed the engineering, the engineering has been done for a while. The good news is the environmental assessment is finally wrapping up, we're in the last phase of that right now. It's what they call an eight-step process, which we're going to be entering for Deepwood shortly, just for your information. So, the eight-step process is part of 24 Federal Register 55, and it basically, it's for any projects that are, you know, undergoing the federal review process, and they are located in the special flood hazard area, so the 500-year floodplain, 100-year floodplain, they have, there's three options. They can reject the project, you can apply to FEMA for a letter of map revision or letter of map amendment, which does not apply for these projects because they are literally almost in the floodway. And then the third step is to proceed with that eight-step process, so it just takes longer than some of these other grant projects that we've had. Oh, wait. Yeah, so the environmental's wrapping up, and then we will receive the authorization to use grant funds, and then construction will start shortly thereafter. So, we're, I don't want to give an exact date, but it's, we're getting there, so.
And all of this is a function of federal guidelines and state stipulations, since they are grant dollars, there's a certain set of procedures that must be followed that take quite a bit longer than what's typical for these type of projects.
So, Deepwood, this was talked about back early on when we received the grant, and this, this project in particular has been really complex because the, there was, the acquisition grant was combined for Frenchman's Creek, Frenchman's Creek and Deepwood, and then the infrastructure grant ties this Deepwood project to the Pipe Rack project. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to determine what your project is going to be if you don't know what property you're acquiring. So, that in addition to the environmental complications are what's caused such a delay on getting this through. But again, we're making good progress. The area in yellow, I mean, yellow, it's light green, is what has been 100% identified that these are going to be acquired. We're still, we're still looking at an additional property or two that may ultimately be acquired, but in order to go ahead and get the infrastructure side of the project moving, that area, we are looking at doing a clearing project, so, and it would reduce the conveyance in the area. So, that would be the flood control project, and there, at a later time, I know that there's some interest from GCCDD to go in there and do more of it, at this point, we really need to wrap these projects up, so let's, yeah.
Have we acquired all the properties at Deepwood yet?
So, we've acquired all the properties that we can physically acquire with the grant dollars. Obviously, with GLO, CDBG dollars, it's a voluntary acquisition, so we cannot exercise eminent domain. There are a couple of property owners that were not interested in working with us at the fair market value based upon the appraisals that were acquired, so we have since parted ways with them. The Drainage District, however, is working closely with those property owners to acquire it using non-federal dollars, and by doing so, they're able to do some things that we weren't able to do. The two biggest constraints in all these was, all the, this effort as well as Frenchman's Creek, was we were allocated dollars. We weren't, we didn't submit a project, and they said, go forth and build, here's the money to do that project. They said, these are the dollars you're going to get, try to find a project that's close to it, and then apply to use those dollars for that project. So, we tried to shoehorn existing projects within the constraints that were provided both by the feds and the state. We are going to do a project beyond just the shaded area that Samantha indicated in partnership with the Drainage District, once they're done acquiring additional properties beyond what we could do.
Mo, to follow up what the mayor asked, where that oxbow is, there were a bunch of fishing cabins, were we able to get the fishing cabins?
So, we got a good number of them. I closed on eight properties here about three weeks ago with the fishing cabins. There are still about three or four that remain that need to be purchased, as well as there's a property that, I want to say six lots that Cully Grace owns that the Drainage District is working on personally.
Yeah, but that's at the confluence of two creeks, and that area is a really interesting area for a drainage project.
It is, and it's not shown on this map, all the aerials shown, but we are going to look to encompass the old public worksite as well, and, and make it a larger project. In any regard, it will have to be modeled, and Samantha has to be satisfied that we do have a benefit downstream before we do anything further.
So, yeah, I was going to add on to what Morad said, so, a little bit, like originally, we were thinking that this area closer to the creek was going to be part of the project, and so, you know, that kind of limits having an in-line detention project if you don't have properties that are along the creek. And then the other thing of note, this is on the National Wetlands layer as well as this little spot here, and so, it would have involved a lot more environmental investigation, you know, and we did not really want to go down that road, especially with the time constraints from the grant.
So, we're going to close out the grant project, and then we're going to assess what available opportunities exist between our fundings as well as the Drainage District, and if we need to get creative, we will get creative.
Yeah, that's a pretty interesting place. Yeah, that's a pretty interesting place.
On the three or four that are remaining, is anyone actually living in those little fishing?
Uh, one of them, it is being leased. Uh, I don't know the conditions of the, the structure themselves. But much like anything else, when the, the city's coming forward to get a project, all of a sudden, they're sitting on million-dollar properties.
So, um, we, we do, we are making progress now on the engineering side. The preliminary engine, engineering report and drawings have been submitted. We're reviewing those. Then it should be a quid, uh, fairly quick turnaround to hand those back over to the environmental, uh, contractor. So they can wrap up the environmental work, and then we can work on completing the engineering. So, um, after that, the clearing project is estimated to take about three months. Um, and then the construction, um, start would be as soon as we receive the authorization to use grant funds. The three detention basins along Cowards Creek, so they're located at Two Queens Lane, Three Ten West Castlewood, and Three Oh One West Castlewood. Uh, this is a joint partnership with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. Um, the, the way that the, the interlocal worked is that these were buyouts that the city had. And we are allowing the GCDD, GCCDD to build offline detention ponds at those locations. Of course, we're reviewing the engineering and, and making sure that everything's done, um, according to city standards. So, um, the, the engineering and environmental work has been completed. The clearing for the, for these projects started around June twenty-second. And I believe that the, that the, it was gonna be like around twenty to twenty-five acre feet for the, um, offline. Offline, um, basin, yeah, detention.
So this would be like three small basins?
Yes. Um, uh, so the comprehensive master drainage plan is probably the most exciting thing on this presentation this evening. Um, this is going to be hopefully a joint effort with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District and the city. Um, the, on the consent agenda this evening is the interlocal agreement where GCCDD is looking to provide up to four hundred thousand dollars. And, um, it'll be a, you know, towards the, the comprehensive regional master drainage plan. Um, the, the master drainage plan is going to look not only at riverine flooding, but also drainage flooding. So urban street flooding, and in the, the city of Friendswood, there's a lot of overlapping urban and riverine flooding. So we're looking at getting kind of the latest, greatest one-D, two-D models. Um, you know, whoever ends up being hired for this will, will be doing cutting-edge modeling to really, uh, indicate where flooding is happening. And then there, there would be up to fifteen project alternatives identified. And along with that, we would have, um, information such as the benefit cost ratio, which we've deto- we, we've touched on a little bit. But for, um, for any grant applications or for future state-funded projects, a BCA or benefit cost, um, uh, bene- or BCR benefit cost ratio is, uh, required. And it, it takes the benefits from the project and it compares it to the cost. Um, and if you don't have higher than a one, you're kinda out of luck, but, um, that's a, that's a, across, you know, it's a standard way that they, uh, that they use for grants. Or, um, to, you know, grants or other, other funding pots to distribute money. So, um, it's really exciting. We're gonna come out of this with knowing where our problems are, uh, what would work. And then we're gonna have everything set up so that we can hopefully pursue funding, know where to go to perceive funding. Whether it's, um, local commitments, uh, grants, um, that's another item that's on the master drainage plan. Is, uh, looking at how we would get these funded and setting up some kind of timeline.
Samantha, um, the GLO is having a presentation in the next week and a half or so. I think I might've sent you and Hill an email on that. I'll be attending it. But they're also gonna be going through hydrology models and all sorts of things like that. I don't know if some of that information could be ponied into our master drainage plan, so we don't duplicate work. If, if they've got stuff from the state, and especially if we're going after the state, we might want to look at some of the, their, uh, their modeling that they're doing with their, this drainage presentation that they're gonna have, and I think there's a lot of stakeholders that are gonna be there, so I was just gonna mention that. I think I sent that email.
You did, and, uh, both Hill and Samantha will be in, in attendance. At least one or the other will be in attendance. Um, di- to the extent that there can be coordination and we can benefit off their information, we definitely will. A lot of times when they do those regional assessments, it's, it's so macro level that, uh, they don't get accurate information for our area.
Right.
Um, and if Samantha mentioned it while I was grabbing a water bottle, I apologize. Uh, our last com- comprehensive, and I'm putting it in quotation, uh, evaluation on drainage was in two thousand and seven. We did a study in nineteen ninety-three that evaluated the problem areas in Friendswood. And then in two thousand and seven, we updated it, which resulted in the Five Eighteen Drainage Project that was completed in oh-nine and twenty-ten. This will be the first time that we actually look at the city in totality, uh, as, in a po- as opposed to just the problem areas. And the fact that the Drainage District wanted to split the cost with us on such an expensive endeavor, it's a fantastic opportunity to leverage local dollars.
Don't forget about all that great work that Councilmember Rocky and his subcommittee did after Harvey.
We're still trying to forget that. We, we, we had hair before the event. I know, no, it, it wasn't all bad, but it was, it was a painful nine months.
Oh, that's right. You got to go to those meetings too, it is. What a smart mayor sending you to those. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so we have the request for qualifications out right now. Um, towards the end of August, we'll be working with GCCDD to select a contractor and bringing that here at the September twenty-twenty-three council meeting. Um, I'm gonna flip to the second one just cause the, the image is on here. But, um, the Friendswood Regional Stormwater Detention Basin, uh, this is the, the detention pond up near FM nineteen fifty-nine. Kind of at the border of Pearland and Friendswood. Um, this, this project is a, a regional effort between, um, and, and, and partnership, uh, funding partnership with the city of Friendswood, Galveston County, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and Harris County Flood Control District. Um, it's on a hundred and five acre tract, and kind of keep that number in the back of your mind, cause I'm gonna mention something at the, at the end. Um, the, um, the, the project is expected to be somewhere between one thousand and seventeen hundred acre feet. Uh, which is really large, um, for an offline detention basin. It, it's gonna be offline. Um, they're looking, right now, they're working on the, uh, hydraulic and hydrology model, modeling, and they're looking at three different alternatives. And, um, so we're, right now, we're in the preliminary engineering phase, which will wrap up in the fall. There will be detailed engineering that will need to come after that. So this project, you know, it's still a bit before it's gonna reach construction. Um, but, uh, the, the alternative should be selected by the, you know, by the completion. And there will be a second, um, public outreach meeting, so there'll be another chance, or there'll be a chance for people to comment on the alternative that's selected. And that will be considered when it goes on to the, to the next phase. Um, so milestones at this point, uh, I, I believe most of the environmental investigations have, uh, wrapped up. There's, or if there is any work left, it's, it's really little. Um, they've done a lot of the geotechnical work. We're well into the H and H modeling. Um, and then, um, interesting, I wanted to touch base on this rough grading project design a little bit. Um, so Galveston County is using their, uh, ARPA funds to commit to this project. And they have to have, um, those funds expended, I believe, by twenty-twenty-six. Um, and we have to be in construction on a project. So the overall timeline for this was not looking great. And so Harris County Flood Control District, um, decided to, um, you know, with, with everyone's input, of course. Um, they decided to actually create a second project with its own project manager. Where they are looking at, um, excavating material and areas that don't have to go under as intensive of environmental reviews as some, as some of the other areas, so that we can move faster and get to construction faster on that.
To use the ARPA funds.
Right, to use the ARPA funds, exactly. Um, yeah, I already mentioned the community engagement meeting. As soon as we, we know when the next one will come up, sometime in the fall, make sure everybody knows. Okay, so I, I wanted to, uh, that's the presentation, but I wanted to, um, mention, so something that is in the works right now. We are working with the, um, we're working with the ASO department to really try and understand what the cost is to the city, the maintenance cost is to the city of all these flood control projects. Um, so I, I don't, I, I could not get enough information together to really portray it in a presentation and feel confident with it at this point. But I did wanna mention that, um, the current, I think it's the, the updated mowing estimate is, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above what it has been before because of all these land acquisitions that we've acquired towards projects. And that's not including the Friendswood Regional, uh, Stormwater Basin or Wickham. Um, so that a hundred and five acres, just that, uh, Friendswood Regional Basin alone is probably another hundred and fifty thousand of mowing. And, and there's, you know, there potentially could be other costs if we're having, for some of these, not all of them. But if we're having to maintain an outlet structure or park features, you know, paths, um, so.
Pretty confident to think that that's not going to occur in the twenty-three, twenty-four time period. That's probably going to be when the basin is dr- done, and so we're probably looking out to twenty-four, twenty-five and not finishing until twenty-six, right?
So the, the estimates that are provided for the twenty-three, twenty-four don't have nineteen fifty-nine online this next year. The estimates, uh, that Samantha's referring to is gonna be the following year.
So my, my question is, with all these projects that we have on board, um, we're really not looking at actually digging dirt except for what we're already doing. And oh, Heritage looks great for all of us that popped on our Corvettes and everything for the Fourth of July. Did y'all get a chance to look over at Heritage? That really looks great over there. Uh, but Wickham, that's probably not gonna come online till twenty-four, twenty-five, maybe twenty-five, twenty-six?
So, the, the state component of Wickham will not, but the private side, where we're developing in conjunction with Louis Tanos for the Wickham property, will come online. The detention pond will come online within twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. He's, he's under design right now. The H and H modeling is under design right now. He's hoping to start moving dirt before the end of the calendar year, which I don't think he'll meet that timeline, but these.
Okay, um, but just as far as timing is concerned, these, these projects aren't gonna just all of a sudden appear in twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, no, um, the, uh, the FM nineteen fifty-nine, you know, so once the preliminary engineering completes in the fall, it's probably going to be another nine months to a year before the, um, before the engi- engineering is complete. And then, of course, it'll take a little bit to actually contract the construction. Um, so, you know, the earliest you're looking would be sometime in, you know, maybe like winter twenty-twenty-four, but probably, I mean, it's probably gonna be longer than that, would be my guess.
And then Blackhawk, Blackhawk is just a dream right now, right?
So Blackhawk is not funded right now.
Oh, yeah, we don't have any funding identified.
Okay.
I just keep that one on there, um, so we.
It's a good one. I, I, that, that helps Autumn Creek, that, that's a.
Well, we do have, it's, it's, um, it's being studied right now through the state flood plan. Um, it was selected that they thought that it might potentially have a high enough benefit cost ratio that it, you know, it could receive funding from the state through that state flood plan, so they're looking at it. And then we also have a scoping project that was just awarded through a mitigation grant. Harvey, no, wait, it's a, was it brick?
Uh, it's the Building Resiliency, um, Infrastructure, uh, and I forget what the C stands for, but yes, the brick grant.
Um, so that's exciting. We're, uh, you know, like a lot of these, a lot of these, um, projects, what we're told, that go through the brick grants. Um, or the FMA grants, the flood mitigation assistance grants. They'll, they like to do these scoping projects, which are inexpensive. It just kind of looks at like a preliminary planning kind of, or feasible feasibility level, uh, study. They, you know, they see what the benefit cost would be. Is it worth spending all the money on the project? How much would it cost? What are, you know, who, how is this gonna help? Uh, how many homes would be removed from the floodplain? But, um, and then if it, if it scores well enough, then people can submit for the next stage, which might be either engineering or engineering and design together. So there's, you know, we have things going on, looking for potential funding, but this is, you know, much further down the road.
Right. Okay, thanks Samantha.
So I have a question. I wanna make sure I understood, because I do think it's real important that every time we do something, even when we get grant fund, funds to build something or to clear it, that we have to maintain it and that adds to our budget. So did I hear you say a hundred and fifty thousand for what we have now, or will be completing very soon?
Correct.
For this next fiscal year?
Correct.
And after nineteen fifty-nine and Wickham, or just nineteen fifty-nine?
Nineteen fifty-nine.
Would be another hundred and fifty for maintenance on that.
Yeah, that's really high, high level though. That's why I, I really wanna try to pull the information together, so we're really getting an, an idea.
Communicate all that, really. I think it's very smart and responsible thing to do.
Councilmember Rocky?
Um, this is more of a comment. I just wanted to mention that, um, our state rep Greg Bonin, who happens to be also the chair of the, um, Budget Committee, did manage to get a ten million dollar, um, budget item through specifically for Lower Cr- Cr- Clear Creek, which basically the Wickham property. It goes through Harris County.
Harris County Flood Control District.
He did bring it in. It did get signed by the governor, and we have that ten million in the next budget cycle for the state. And in having a conversation with him, he said, you know, he would be willing to talk to us about future years as well, so.
Be great.
Yeah, it's great. He's a great proprietor of this stuff.
Yeah, and, and Mo, you may wanna, you may wanna reiterate too. Governor Abbott vetoed the funding for the trust fund dollars for the Gulf Coast Protection District.
Correct.
But my understanding is that could be brought back up in special session. So the, those trust fund dollars, though, they didn't drop when we thought they might drop. They, they could drop still this year in the special session.
Correct. So in twenty-twenty-one, the state created the Gulf Coast Re- um, Protection District, uh, because the, the Fed stipulated that there needed to be a local sponsor, a local jurisdiction that would manage and oversee the projects, uh, before they can, uh, funnel federal dollars our way. And so they created the district without a funding mechanism in place. This legislative session, they passed a bill to provide, uh, a depository, a place that where they can have that funding mechanism and the taxing authority to be able to collect funds, and that's the bill that Governor Abbott vetoed. It's my understanding, as you mentioned, that, uh, the author of the bill, Representative Dennis Paul and Governor Abbott are close to terms on a solution. It just hasn't been finalized yet.
I have read, I'm sorry, can I talk?
Yes, ma'am.
I had read that he was vetoing a lot, like eighty bills or whatever, because he wanted them focused on getting something passed for property, uh, tax relief. And so hopefully today, since they both agreed, some of those bills will then, he'll sign them or they'll address them in another second, um, third.
A special session.
Yeah, special session.
Yes, ma'am.
Can't talk.
Well, great job Samantha. I'm so glad you're here, you know, uh, as our.
My comments weren't directed to Samantha. My headaches were just sitting through the drainage subcommittee meetings for nine months.
Which we did great work on.
Yes, you did great work. Since you've been here Samantha and, and kind of focused us more on flooding and drainage, it's done a remarkable amount of work to really find, uh, projects for us to work on, and so I, I thank you very much. Item, uh, seven B, receive an update concerning the twenty-twenty-three state legislative session presented by Murad Kabiri, City Manager and Karen Horner, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a brief update of the eighty-eighth legislative regular session. Um, I'm gonna just go through, fly through them. If you have questions, you can ask me, or we can visit afterwards as well. Um, just a regular session overview, you can see that the amount of bills are filed continues to increase. The amount, the city-related bills are typically about twenty-five percent of those bills. And that's no different this time. The bills were passed. You can see it twelve hundred fifty, one thousand two hundred fifty-eight bills were passed. About two hundred and thirty of those were related to the city. So as you recall, earlier this year, you all established some legislative priorities, and you identified sixty different bills, fourteen were companions, that, uh, you pre- wanted to go forward or were hoping that would be, um, would make it. So of those, uh, that you identified, two good bills passed and five bad pills passed, and the rest just remained on the cutting room floor. So the good, uh, So the good, uh, the good was the P and Z public hearings. It now clarifies that there's only one public hearing required before, on a preliminary report before bringing it to council. Um, and another good one was, uh, Chapter three eighty property conveyance. You can now convey property via three eighty agreement. There are certain conditions that have to be met as far as, um, notice hearings and different things of that nature, but so long as it is a public purpose and that there's a significant, um, conditions in your agreement to make sure that public purchase is accomplished. The bad, we have a third-party review now, so if, uh, we do not make a certain, uh, if we do not approve, disapprove, or do something with a application within thirty days, fifteen days thereafter, a third party can review the statute specifies who are qualified to make those reviews. Um, we cannot recoup any costs or anything like that, and it also provides as an appeal procedure if the applicant is not satisfied with the review. Uh, the juvenile curfew, this is going away, um, you'll have it up in your next agenda. We will go ahead and repeal ours. Um, all cities are repealing them as well, so it is a level playing field. Next is reauthorization of building fees. Those building fees that we've adopted, we would have to look at them every ten years or else they will be abolished. So this, this one, uh, bill comes into effect in January one, so between now and then, we will hold a public hearing, adopt those fees, and we'll just, uh, continue to move forward with that. Now, the really ugly is everything everybody's heard about is the Texas Regulatory Consistency Act, which is a preemption bill. So the legislature this session really was going after, uh, cities, it appeared to, to really take some of the authority that the cities had away, especially home rule authorities. Um, unlike general law cities, home rule authorities, home rule cities can do anything unless we're expressly prohibited by statute. General law has to look to the statute like counties do for their authority. So this, we're really trying to peel back our authority. So in the bill itself, there's some express preemptions, there's some, um, potential preemptions, because we don't really know what it means. Um, and it also creates a cause of actions, and the cause of action basically flips the burden of proof. Typically, your actions are deemed, deemed, uh, constitutionally deemed valid, and someone would have to come in and challenge that it wasn't valid. It's kind of flipped its on its head now. So that's kind of an interesting, uh, thing that we'll have to take a look at and see how it moves. But a good provision in this bill at least is that if somebody has a problem with one of the ordinances or anything that you all pass, there is a three-month review period before they would be able to file suit or go forward. So that gives us an opportunity to, um, take a look closer to see if we need to make any revisions to our ordinances.
The city of Houston is suing the state over this particular-
Exactly, in Travis County. So they have sued the state, um, a deck action, and they've challenged the constitutionality of it. Because, um, the stat, the, the Supreme Court has established for years that, that in order to, uh, make sure that we are preempted, it has to be done with unmistakable clarity. And in this case, um, i- it's really not, so they're kind of leaving it up to, I think even the author of the bill indicated they're leaving it up to the legisla-, this judicial system to establish what that is. And that's really not, um, how laws should be made. So they're challenging that and a bunch of other things, and they filed a deck action. So, uh, there's a lot of cities I know that are filing, uh, amicus briefs in support of that, so it'll be interesting and we will be following that. So, um, the express preemptions are certain employment matters. Some cities have gone out and, uh, established employment regulations for others, not themselves, um, but for, uh, just other employers, uh, doing, buying back hires and breaks and benefits that they have to provide or, and so, uh, that's no longer available under this law. Also, the breeding care and treatment, sale of animals, if they're licensed by the, uh, federal or state, we can't do anything about that. And then eviction regulations, basically you can't restrict or prohibit or delay an eviction. Cities can't. Um, the possible preemptions, this is where the legislature said that we can't regulate in a field of regulation that's occupied by provision of following codes, and then they list all these different codes. So it's, that's really a big challenge, because we don't really know what that means. What is occupied? What's a field of regulation? Um, so these are some of the things that are involved in that suit. These fortunately are, are codes that we don't deal a lot in as municipalities, but there are certain things that we do have in each of these codes that we will do, need to be taking a look at. And staff is taking a look at that, and we'll be bringing, um, some changes back to you, uh, possible changes for, for us to be in compliance with state law. And then there's no preemptions, um, so we can still regulate massage parlors, um, retail sale of dogs, that is, until, uh, the state adopts their regulation. Roadway construction, taxes, maintenance fees and things like that, we're still good. Policies related to city employees and public awareness campaigns, payday lending, your credit access businesses, that is. If you had a, if you had an ordinance only in place in January one, interesting thing on that is that if you make an amendment, then maybe you can no longer regulate it, so you're kind of stuck in whatever you had at the time. And, um, good thing we have no less authority than general law cities, so that's not a, not very comforting. So just quickly going through some of the other bills that we have, um, so there's seventeen oh seven, it's dealing with charter schools. And if there is no, uh, if the people in the schools, the administrators thing have no personal interest, financial interest in the charter school or in the property or whatever, they can provide a certification to the city, and the city would have to treat them as any other public school. Um, so the, except for, uh, impact fees, they won't be able to get the benefit of impact fees that school district do. But besides that, siding and zoning things, we would also be, uh, have to treat them like the ISD. Um, ag operations, this is subject to a constitutional amendment. It basically requires, um, allows certain timber, wildlife, different, uh, ranching and things like that to remain if it's, if it's, uh, currently operational in your city. And, um, and the city could not regulate that, except if it provides, uh, uh, provides harm to the public health and safety. It's got to be some sort of imminent harm, so it's a little heightened standard as well. And then comp, uh, plans and plats, uh, this is kind of a very, uh, broad, broad, uh, statute. It covers a lot of different things, a lot of things. It removes plans from the thirty-day shot clock. We have thirty days to approve plans, and so it removes plans. It also establishes different, um, things that are required for a plat application, and we have to provide a list of what those are and adopt that list and also publish that on the website. Um, compensation for non-conforming uses, this basically allows a non-conforming use to continue, which is currently what we do. Uh, but we have to provide, if we're going to change the zoning district and to make a non-conforming use, we have to provide notice. We have to mail notice and do certain things in order to provide them, uh, notice and let them know what's going on. If perhaps we tell them that they can no longer continue with their non-conforming use, there is a compensation provision and also, uh, potentially just allow them to continue to have the non-conforming use for a certain period of time. Um, public works for COs, it defines twelve different things that are public works that we can issue COs for. No value-based fees, we can't base fees, um, on values. We would have to do it basically based on the cost of the city to do different inspections and things of that nature. Um, we would have to establish what that is. We also have to provide notice and post those on the website. Um, no sales tax, you heard that there's, uh, no sales tax can be imposed on certain, uh, hygiene issues, baby bottles, uh, diapers and different things of that nature. Tax abatement database is the same thing that we do for three eighties. They basically took the three twelve agreements, the tax abatement agreements, and also made those to report to the state comptroller, and so there would be a list of those that anybody can go and see what, what the city's done as far as tax abatement agreements. Um, and the unused increment rate, this won't go in effect until January, uh, one of twenty twenty-four, and basically it just revises a little bit the calculation of the increment rate. It's still for three years, but just, uh, changes how it's actually calculated. Again, we talked about the repeal of the curfews, vaccine mask enclosure mandates. We can no longer, uh, do anything with that. They're going to be relying on the state for all those type of, uh, mandates. Uh, Teak Hole Sunset Bill, uh, Teak Hole was up, that's the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. And so they had a sunset this time, so they're continued until twenty thirty-one, and it establishes that there's certain databases that they have to keep, there's certain requirements, um, that they have to do. They're going to stop certain policies, that the city's policies have to be substantially similar to those, and hiring and, and, uh, discipline and, and things of that nature. Uh, for personnel, there's injury leave, um, this is for first, first responders, and basically mirrors the requirement in one forty-three oh seventy-three, I believe, of the, uh, Local Government Code, which is the civil service statute. So it makes us have to conform with the same thing as other cities do if they're civil service. And then telecommunications mental health leave is similar what, to what you all did last year for our police officers. And so we will put that, we will bring that back to you and also put the telecommunications in there and provide them the same sort of leave. Open government, um, there's, uh, law enforcement records, uh, one oh eight of the Texas open, uh, Texas Public Information Act, um, allows us to withhold certain, uh, law enforcement records if there is a, um, if there was not a conviction or if there was no deferred. And this kind of chips away at that, and so we have to provide, um, additional information. So it's just kind of chips away at some of the exemptions that we have. PI changes, there's a lot of changes in this one. They chipped away at some more, uh, exceptions in there. They also now require us to file everything instead of sending our AG opinions via mail to them. We have to use their database system. Um, elections, there's got to be a website now for political contribution expenses, and that website would have, be able to redact names and, uh, addresses, but we have to have that up on the website. We have to have it up for five years. And then the recount deadlines have been changed. It's really just one day, from two days to three days on the recount. The recount, if that debt falls on a Saturday or Sunday or holiday, it goes to the next day at ten o'clock AM. Purchasing, um, we have twelve ninety-fives now. It just talks about how that could be voidable if we don't get the twelve ninety-fives in after we provide notice and they don't respond within a reasonable period of time. Lease terms, if we lease any city property, there's some provisions that we have to require of performance bounds, payment bonds and different things, just to protect our property. And if they fail to provide those, or if they go ahead and make an alteration to one of our facilities without providing us notice and getting our approval first, there's some criminal penalties associated with that. And unsigned change orders is just the bill that requires that, um, contractors don't have to go forward with a change order if they don't have a signed change order. Um, miscellaneous, just removal from office, so there's certain terms, um, if, uh, someone's convicted of bribery or certain, um, theft or some terms like that, they automatically forfeit their office, and then the council would have to meet and either appoint or, uh, hold an election to fill that office in accordance with our charter. And the last one is the TikTok bill that everybody's heard about, that we cannot have TikTok on any city computers or anything like that, so. That's all I had, just running through really, really quickly, but wanted to give you a quick update. If there's other bills, these are just a few that I just picked out, so, um, we are still reviewing and trying to make sure that we're in compliance. But if you have any questions, don't ever hesitate to let me know.
Thanks Karen. Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment about the preemption bill. What you hear, um, when, when you hear the legislature talk about that is what they're trying to do is to make it easier to do business in Texas. So they keep, you hear this thing that we have a patchwork quilt of laws with all these different cities, and it makes it harder to do business. That is absolutely not true. Absolutely not true. There's a McDonald's in every corner, a Starbucks, everybody, you can do business across the state, even though we have different rules. It's very easy to do. So that, that is a false reason. What they're really trying to do is put control on certain cities. And we get pulled in with those certain cities that they don't like. So, uh, off my soapbox, but I just want to make that comment.
Yes. Thanks Karen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seven C, receive and discuss an update regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. I'm going to hold our break until we get through this, just to kind of hold these guys hostage. I'm not going to let them-
So you want me to be-
Take a break until-
Long-winded as possible. Got it.
No, be as-
No, um-
Be as brief as Karen. Try to, try to get through-
So this evening, we're all going to talk about updates since the last discussion at the council retreat, uh, updates relative to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. A lot of times when people think properties taxes, there's a, a variety of things that go into that. There's the value of your home, there's the tax rate that the various local entities adopt, and then there's also the exemptions that you may or may not qualify for depending on your particular circumstances. So the chart that you have before you is a five-year running tab of our valuations. The, the bar in blue represents the total appraised value, and two, twenty eighteen was roughly about four point one billion dollars. And then in twenty twenty-two, the current fiscal year that we're in for tax purposes, it was a little over six billion dollars. Uh, however, each year we have exemptions as well that's deducted from that total valuation that determine what we collect in actual tax levy and revenue received for the city for property tax purposes. In twenty eighteen, that value was a little under, uh, one billion dollars, at nine hundred and something million. In twenty twenty-two, it's nearly two billion dollars. So this is your over sixty-five exemption, so if you're over sixty-five exempt, you freeze your taxes. We don't collect a penny more from your property regardless of what we do in terms of our rate. This is for homestead exemptions. We have a twenty percent homestead exemption for properties in Friendswood if you file your homestead. Uh, and it's a variety of other exemptions that folks may or may not qualify for, whether it's disability or veterans support or so on and so forth. Um, let me back up. One other big exemption on here that's, uh, that continues to creep is property that's taken off the rolls for, uh, churches and other nonprofit organizations. If they purchase commercial properties that were previously taxed and now it's used for religious reasons, then that comes off the rolls as well. So our total tax rate is made up of two components, an interest and seeking component that pays our debt service, and then an operations and maintenance that pays for our operational expenses, for mowing the grass, for, uh, responding to nine one one calls, so on and so forth. Of the fifty-two cent tax rate that's being proposed for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which again, these are based on preliminary values. We don't have certified values and will not have certified values for, uh, Galveston County. We're likely going to receive them on July twenty-fifth. Harris County side of Friendswood won't be received until much later in the budget process, simply because the, of their population, they're not obligated to give it at this time. The debt service component of our tax rate is twelve point two one cents. Um, roughly six point one million dollars of the revenue we collect goes to paying our debt. This is prior year debt issuances that the voters approved that said, hey, we're okay with these projects. We're willing to support these projects even if they mean a tax increase to the, to them as homeowners within our community. The remaining tax rate is made up of our operations and maintenance is forty point seven three, uh, cents per one hundred dollars in valuation. Um, last year was roughly a little under thirty-nine cents, if I remember correctly. Uh, on the debt service side, it was a little, uh, around nine cents. So we're going up nearly three cents on the debt service and going up a penny and a half or thereabouts on the, on the operations and maintenance.
What's the total that we've raised the tax rate since twenty nineteen for debt service?
Uh, we have gone up from three point two million to six point, so-
On our tax rate?
So roughly six cents, uh, in debt service increase. Now, we've absorbed those, those increases by reducing operations-
Our tax rate's been flat.
Correct. Uh, our tax rate's been flat, so we've absorbed it based on new valuation. We've also absorbed it in years that we've done the no new revenue rate. Yes, ma'am.
How many pennies have we gone up, not, not past as a tax rate, but how many pennies more of the tax rate are we spending on debt service since that time?
So we've gone up nearly six pennies, uh, and-
Six pennies more, okay.
Now, again, that's based on valuation and stuff. We've gone from three point two million in fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to six point one million. So a three million dollar increase in each, right now a penny equates to half a million dollars.
Okay, I, I think, I think we were at nine point something, just under ten cents last year, so-
This current fiscal year?
Yeah, so we're talking twelve point two one cents. We're looking at a little less than three cents for debt service.
Right.
And, and the, the total that we're looking at, not certified values, is pulling in all total about twenty-six point six million dollars from property taxes for the general fund. That includes debt service and maintenance and operations.
Correct, and-
Okay, we're not talking about four pennies here, because the net no revenue rate is forty-five and seven, or just under forty-six cents. So each year that we've adopted the forty-eight cents, we have raised so many pennies above the no net revenue rate.
Right.
So we're looking at approximately seven cents from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four in, in raising taxes.
And we can go into that in a little bit more detail. Um, the, the six pennies I was referring to is relative to twenty eighteen. To now, our total debt service obligation has gone up from three point two million to six point one million. Nearly three million dollars or six pennies based on the value of a penny today.
Today's out.
You take all that back out, it's about even. You take those debt, when it goes to seven, it's about back down to a worship.
Correct. Um, so what does our general fund pay for? Uh, a lot of times when people think their property taxes, there's a little bit of, uh, it's a nebulous term. They don't know exactly what it relates to. So of our total general fund expenditures, nearly half of it goes to public safety. This is police, this is fire, this is EMS services. The other big chunk of that goes to general government, which includes the city manager's office, city secretary's office, administrative services, IT and HR. You can't have an operation where you have a hundred-plus public safety employees between police, fire and EMS without the support services to, one, pay the salaries, two, to do the audits, uh, three, to make sure their equipment is functioning. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, uh, uh, by chance that when you call nine one one, it is routed appropriately and dispatched to the appropriate officer that finds the nearest, uh, respondent to go there. So those two things go hand in hand. And then beyond those two categories, you have parks and recreation, which you've heard a lot of the kudos for the Fourth of July festivities. You heard about mowing services at various parks and obligations therein. You have streets and drainage, you have engineering that do these projects, you have the library. So there's a lot that goes into that, uh, that property tax, uh, that's predominantly, uh, that only funds general fund services.
So Murad, as a service organization, most of this is, is people?
Correct. We do leverage, um, technology where we can to reduce the, curb the growth in people. So for instance, uh, last November, council adopted a ratio for, uh, police officers of one point five six officers per one thousand and- police officers of 1.56 officers per 1,000 population. So as the population grows, we're supposed to be adding officers to make sure that we have appropriate coverage throughout the community. We have recently instituted the flock cameras and the use of cameras at a variety of locations to sort of improve the assets and the tools that police officers have to work more efficiently. And as we employ more of those things, we can help, uh, reduce the, the need for personnel in the long run. But as of right now, we're predominantly a, a service organization and we have to have people, the, the, the grass doesn't get cut by itself. When you call 911, it's not a robot that shows up to your house. I mean, it's, now there are agencies that are looking at various alternatives. I know Houston, for instance, uh, is upping their tele emergency response. So there are certain calls that they will contact you by video conference for 911, provided they're priority three or less urgent issue. I, we are not there.
65% of our budget is, this, this budget is personnel related?
Uh, so of the general fund, 67, nearly 68% is personnel related.
On the, I got one question on the last, the community development, you said that's for, um, like economic development kind of stuff?
So community development represents the building permits, the planning and zoning component of the city. So they're the ones that are reviewing the plans for new construction, for private developments. They're the ones that are, uh, doing the inspections for those.
I was, I was thinking back on the economic side because one of the things I was going to say to be at a later slide, but it, obviously it takes money to make money and to grow things. And when you think about how to really get out of a hole in the city, you gotta bring in business. I was kind of curious about if they'll add that investment piece. And I got another piece, we'll get to another slide. I was gonna ask, but that's what I was wondering on that.
Sure. And when we mentioned the, the no new revenue rate, for a community to, to, to live off the no new revenue rate from year to year, they have to be in a high growth area. So the only additional revenue we get when we adjust our tax rate down, when values go up, is on new construction that did not exist on the prior tax year. Uh, unfortunately, it's not a linear equation when it comes to yours and I's property taxes. Our home valuations may go up at the state cap of 10%, mine did. Uh, but then we have other properties, commercial properties that got devalued more significantly than anything that, uh, one property in particular went down such a high rate that it, it was equivalent of 18 and a half million dollar home that just came off the tax rule. So when you calculate the no new revenue rate, it's taking into account all these different fluctuations and the property taxes may place additional burdens on some, uh, some folks that their values went up relative to others that theirs dropped. So it, it's, it's not an easy apples to apples comparison when you're talking about these things. But one thing that holds true is our expenditures are the same. We have our debt service obligations. We have our obligations to our employees to make sure that we pay their salaries, to make sure that they're willing to come to work to respond to the, the calls of service that we have in place. So this next slide, you've seen quite a bit over the last 15, 16 years and counting. This represents, um, what the no new revenue rate was for each calendar year and what the actual adopted tax rate was. The bar in blue is the no new revenue rate. The, uh, bar in orange is the actual adopted tax rate for those years. Above the bars, you'll see various text boxes to reflect, uh, 3.5 million voter approved bond program for 24.1 billion. These are debt issuances and bond programs that the city undertook, that we went out to the voters and said, hey, in 2013, we want to do, uh, fire station number, I believe at the time it was fire station number, uh, actually no, it wasn't fire station, it was library. It was, um, uh, a few other projects, street projects, Mary Ann Drive, uh, Woodlawn, uh, Towns Road and Black Hawk. It was, um, park improvements. We acquired Lake Friendswood. We at the time did $24.1 million authorization to do project. In the subsequent years, we issued the debt associated with that. Well, each time we issued those debts, our obligations to pay that mortgage payment continued to go up. So you'll see in subsequent years from the 2013, uh, we've adopted in some cases the no new revenue rate, which basically meant when our debt service went up, we ate the cost in operations and maintenance, or we ate the cost based upon new growth and new construction that we didn't have the prior year. Uh, of note on this, this slide, uh, 2017, we put Harvey. As you recall, that was a major impact to not only our community, but also our operations and our finances. In one fell swoop, we had to spend five point something million dollars in debris pickup that didn't come out of tax revenue. It came out of our, our, our bank account, our emergency reserve. The subsequent years after that, we, as we waited for federal reimbursement to come into place, we had to eat cost in operations and maintenance to make sure that we had a balanced budget so that we didn't have an issue with regard to, uh, not being able to pay our bills or our obligation. In 2019, as a result of Harvey, we went out to the voters and we approved our single biggest bond program that this city has ever had of 20, uh, 52.1 million dollars. And then the subsequent years, we issued the debt associated with that that impacted our tax rate or debt service component. In 2020, I didn't see it coming. Council didn't see it coming. COVID hit. So not only did this wreck havoc on the, uh, our economic viability across the country and across the world for that matter, it impacted, uh, things that we're still seeing today, and that is the compression on inflation. Uh, factories shut down, so as they started back up, it was harder to get, um, materials for the demand that existed out there as things started opening up. So supply chains issues became a real thing. Things that we were spending a dollar on before, and I'm using this as analogy, are now costing five or six dollars. Uh, a good example of that was our mowing contract that we were spending 362,000 a year on, that we're now spending over 700,000 a year. And that was after we bid it twice and after we scaled back the scope so that we can somewhat reduce or curb our costs. So we're still dealing with, uh, with the, the impacts of repercussions of COVID. And then on top of that, we've issued, uh, 8 million in 2020 for our, uh, our 2019 bond program, 14 million in 2021, and tonight we're completing the sale of $30 million worth of bond. Not only is it our single, uh, this is bigger than any bond program we had previously in one, in one issuance of 30 point, or $30 million. And John Robuck's here this evening and he'll give you some good news associated with that. This screen is a static snapshot of our current debt service. The, the dark blue line represents our principal payments for debt. The light blue line represents our interest payments, uh, from today till 2053, when we retire our last bit of debt. So the, the 30 million you're approving tonight, plus the prior year issuances. This will likely change. You'll notice in 2031, the principal and interest payments drop, uh, nearly in half uh, because we're retiring old debt. There will always be a new project to replace it. The amount of infrastructure we have out there, I, I can't tell you, once we do this project, we're done in perpetuity because much like your home, something's going to break. Uh, you fixed the roof this year and a couple of years from now, you're going to have to replace the AC system. It's, and if you neglect those things, it just becomes more and more expensive as time goes on. So what does this tax increase do to our homeowners? So, uh, an average home in Friendswood is $450,000. With a 20% homestead exemption, you're getting taxed a little under $400,000 for that, that home, uh, which equates to $1,754.28 per year. This tax rate is compared to, was this current fiscal year 1,700. With the new tax rate, you're looking at going up to 50, uh, 52 cents, was about 1,900, which equates to about $12.63 uh, a month. Now, that impacts people. I understand $12.63 isn't, is not something to scoff at. If you were to go home tomorrow and tell the voters that you're going to cut taxes by four pennies, you would be heralded as heroes and rightfully so. But that would only equate to $12.63 a month in their pocket. But it, it reduces our operational budget by nearly $2 million, which is a severe impact to our ability to one, pay our debt service, which we don't have a choice. When we, when we make our payments, debt's paid first because that's what state law requires of us. So it impacts our ability to pay our contracts that we've already entered into. It, it impacts our ability to pay our, our employees that make up two thirds of our operational cost on the general fund side. If you compare the current fiscal year budget versus, uh, the proposed, uh, there are a variety of components that go into it. The screen before you are the changes in each of those major categories. So when we talk that staff gets together and scrubs their budget annually, this is an active collaborative effort to make sure that we're looking for saving opportunities where they exist. We're looking at opportunities to, to maximize or leverage existing, uh, resources so that we don't have to continue to raise taxes in order to pay for things. Personnel is going up. It's going up because of our merit pool. It's going up because we're adding additional staff. We're bringing on an EMS chief next year. We're bringing on, uh, moving part-time, uh, employees to full-time so that we can make sure we have adequate coverage on our emergency personnel side. We're bringing on police officer next year. All those costs go up and you'll see in orange, the FY24 cost. And then you'll see in the, the gray, the delta between FY23 and FY24. Supplies has gone down slightly. Again, since personnel makes up the lion's share of our general fund budget, uh, supplies aren't as, as a high, an item. Maintenance is going up. This is our, uh, this is our obligation to, to maintain the additional properties we brought online, whether it's mowing or expanded facilities. So our public safety building expanded by nearly 9,000 square feet. We have to maintain electricity, janitorial wise, so on and so forth, the, the additional square footage. Services has gone down slightly. This is one, a function of our agreement currently with the school district. So I had mentioned to you, uh, for the last three years, we provide school resource officers to our, our local school district and FISD. Uh, we subsidize that service and since I've been city manager, I've told the superintendent that we're going to close that subsidy gap. So last year we were roughly 200 and something thousand. This year it's going to be 104,000 dollars for that subsidy. The cost of the service is what it's costing in terms of personnel, we're providing them is a lot higher than that, but the portion that the city subsidizes for them is going to continue to shrink. On the capital side, and we'll go into this a little bit more detail, but there are one-time expenditures that we made this year, uh, because something needed to be replaced. A good example of that is the tennis court and basketball uh, facilities needed to be resurfaced. We had a few slips out there. And so we took $86,000 from the general fund, uh, unassigned fund balance to pay for those fixes. I don't know what that issue's going to be next year, but as of right now, the, the same thing, one-time expenditures we had this year will not repeat next year. So that's where that savings come from. And then debt service, we talked about it earlier, is going up nearly $1.6 million from this year to next. So what goes into those costs that you saw increase on the previous bar chart? Insurance premiums are going up, not just for us, but they're going up for your individual households. Uh, windstorm insurance is going up significantly. Um, property, uh, maintenance insurance is going up as well. We're contractually obligated with our fire and EMS that we partner with the volunteer fire department to increase, uh, their contract uh, cost accord, in accordance with CPI. In addition to that, we're working with them on staffing shortages relative to their part-time employee pool. EMS is predominantly a paid service. It's not a volunteer service as it used to be years ago. Uh, the fire marshal's office, we're adding an EMS chief to our rank and file as we transition EMS from a, from the volunteer fire department to the city of Friendswood. Uh, PD, we're adding an additional officer. We're trying to reduce that cost a little bit by making it a mid-year higher, which is the $63,000 cost that you see before that. The officer is not making 63,000 for half a year, but between benefits and outfitting them with their equipment, it does cost quite a bit of money. Motorola, so our current body worn cameras, uh, is no longer being serviced and we need a solution in place. Today, more than ever is it, uh, it's, it's the most important thing that we have video, uh, for our PD and, uh, emergency interactions so that we can one, uh, identify issues or two, be able to, to go back and look at things if there's a potential problem. Uh, existing facility maintenance, as I mentioned earlier, we're expanding our, our footprint, both in buildings and in land areas that we're required to maintain. So that's going up. Both those items, existing field maintenance as well as expansion of maintenance and utility cost. Samantha mentioned in her report earlier tonight, the force bend attention pond, we're taking over maintenance of it. Uh, once it's completed, Bay Area Boulevard medians, currently those are being maintained by the Autumn Creek Homeowners Association. And much like our mowing costs are going up, theirs are too. So they said, we're not going to maintain it anymore. So the city can't just say, okay, well, we're just going to let it go to pot. If we don't maintain those right of ways, then visibility is going to become a concern as drivers are going up and down that roadway. If the grass gets too high or if the shrubs get out of hand down that roadway. Now, we did tell them, we're not going to take as good of care of the trees and the, the shrubs that are in there. So if they want any perennial or seasonal flowers planted, we're not doing that. We're just cutting the grass and making sure that there's no obstructions. Um, and then the senior bus, we'll talk about it a little bit later tonight. It's under the consent agenda. Our senior bus, um, went kaput. Uh, so we're purchasing two vans. Uh, they were far more economical, uh, and helpful in terms of transporting our seniors from the senior program. But those bus, those vans will eventually need to be replaced. We have a vehicle replacement plan in place so that we don't have major spikes in our, uh, our tax rate when we try to, to cover the cost of replacing those assets. But, so we need to add that cost to our vehicle replacement plan. I mentioned merit earlier. Um, I can't stress to you the importance of merit for staff. And I'll go on record, if y'all don't want to give me a raise this year, that's fine. I don't, I don't take any concern with that. But the staff needs a raise. We are the lowest staff. We have the lowest staffing ratio of any Houston metro area city. And there's over 100 cities in the Houston metro area. You can't do that if you don't play, pay your employees adequately because a lot of times we're asking them to do the job of two or three employees.
Hey Mo, I have, I'm sorry. Mo, I have one question there.
Yes, sir.
For 2022-23, we had the revenue available in the general fund to pay merit, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
If we didn't raise taxes whatsoever, a penny or anything, and brought in the same revenue we brought in in 22-23, then we would be able to pay merit, wouldn't we? Unless we had hired one or two more people, which we're probably doing. So this is not a total add to, to our budget. Th- this is revenue we probably would have in, um, our current budget for the general fund. If we didn't raise taxes at all, that money is not really an add. We would have that money for merit.
So when you raise someone's salary, it doesn't impact just that fiscal year, it affects future fiscal years because now they're making that much more money. And so their salaries go up. In addition to that, our costs for contract services have gone up. So if we were to adopt the 48.73 tax rate, we wouldn't have sufficient funds to pay any of these forces at work to and include merit.
All right, you mentioned that, um, a lot of the municipalities have new construction and that sort of thing. Now I know the Galveston G-CAD has put out that for Friendswood, Galveston County, we had $110 million worth of new revenue that's coming into the coffers for uh, uh, new construction, people who remodeled their homes, people who put in new driveways, anything that you can, this is all new revenue. So it comes out to about $503,000 that we're getting from new construction. We already know that's coming in and could easily pay for the majority of the merit pay without raising any taxes. We know that new construction's coming in. And then you mentioned, um, Tanos and getting a big cut on his commercial properties, but we also know from G-CAD that, uh, commercial appraisals, and I don't know how Katina carves out how we really, what portion of it we actually get as a city, but the commercial appraisals were up 55% that we were not necessarily accounting for in our budget.
These are based on preliminary values. Until they're certified, we don't know where they're going to end up.
Yeah, so we're really a little early on jumping on 52.94 cents until we really get certifications.
So as I've mentioned, and Katina and Rhonda have mentioned throughout this process, we bring this to you early, early on so that we have the discussions, so we identify what council's priorities are. I'm going to paint the worst case, uh, paint the worst picture upfront and as we get certified values, uh, we're going to be able to scale back because I don't want to be a point where we show up at the August, September meeting and say, you know what, we were woefully, uh, miscalculating this and we need to raise taxes as our neighbors were in Pearland.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, and we're not, and one thing good about us, we're not even counting Harris County yet because we don't have any of those numbers.
Correct. Um, so the, the, the picture should get better as we get closer, especially as we close out, um, as we close, close out, uh, July.
Murad, is it, uh, true that you have to publish the anticipated tax rate before we ever pass it?
So in
Yes, Katina's shaking her head. Just okay.
I thought it was the same thing with school districts. You have, before we ever as a body pass that tax rate, you have to publish it in the newspaper, an anticipated tax rate, and you can't be lower than what we pass.
Correct. And there have been a number of times that we've published a tax rate and when we got to the actual meeting to adopt the tax rate, uh, council adopted a rate that was less. Uh, but by laws, you've indicated we have to publish it early. General fund unfunded decision packages. So you, one, you may look at this screen. None of these items are funded today. But you may look at the screen and not understand the priorities that exist. Friendswood, un, any, unlike any other organization I've worked with previously, is very collaborative. So every department that says, hey, we need to replace a piece of equipment, or we need to do something new that we didn't currently offer, or there's an opportunity to do something differently, has to submit what's known as a decision package. That decision package is vetted amongst senior staff. A representative from each department is in that meeting. That department had, has to sell their, their idea or their decision package to their counterpart. And then everybody leaves the room and you go rank everything but your own items. And the, the listing, the resulting list or the priority list that's developed is what you see before the screen. So what this represents, if council were willing to extend tax So what this represents, if council were willing to extend taxes beyond the 52 cents or find some additional revenue source that doesn't exist at this very moment, this would be the order in which staff would recommend undertaking these things. Council has the latitude and liberty to make any changes whatsoever that y'all want, want to this. If you feel, hey, I don't feel like something on this other list needs to be swapped for something on this list, we can, we'd have to figure out a way to do it, but that's, that's y'all's prerogative. So you have a variety of things on the screen. Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to ask, I don't want to interrupt you, but I know we always earmark the 500,000 for streets, and we know we've got some substantial funds coming in from the street sales tax. When you look at the unfunded, several of those things are like one-time expenditures, they're not ongoing expenses. I would like for us as a council to consider as we come to the close of a year, if we haven't used the 500,000 on streets, that we might take this list and look at the things that are one-time expenditures, not ongoing, and see how far down the list we can get and go ahead and spend the 500,000 that's earmarked for streets if we don't need it for streets.
We, we can definitely, definitely look at that. The, the budget that we've come up with to this point, and obviously it's still a work in progress, still takes 500,000 out of fund balance to pay for, for streets in addition to the 2.2 million we get in revenue from the sales tax. But if this collective council wants to fund any and all of these one-time expenditures with those 500,000, that is a permitted, permissible use.
I'd like for us to consider that going forward.
Say that one more time, just to make sure I got it, that the 500,000 is already included or not included?
So it's included in the budget. It's not a revenue that's generated by the tax rate. So for the last eight years, we haven't been able to fund the 500,000 coming from property tax revenues. What happens is as we close out a fiscal year, fund balance either grows or subtracts from year to year depending on what our expenditures were and what sales tax revenue was above or beyond what we projected. So there are years that our fund balance decreases based upon one-time expenditures or that we outpaced our expenditures slightly based on revenue for a variety of reasons. And there are other years that we didn't spend quite as much, and so it all rolls over into fund balance. We've been funding that 500,000 beyond the 2.2 million for a sales tax for streets out of our fund balance. So if you said, we don't want the 500,000 anymore, you can't lower the tax rate, but it could be used to, to pay for these one-time items.
And in fact, it is. I mean, every month we approve a budget amendment.
And there's a slide, yes, sir.
And the items in that budget amendment, what do you think is paying those, those items? It's fund balance. And so we're essentially approving every month a list that they provide, staff provides. Now, we don't usually discuss it, but we, we take their suggestion every month and approve.
And it's already prioritized.
It's a prioritized list.
It's basically what, what they're doing, so.
And Sally's-
I think Sally, we're, we're basically doing what you're suggesting that we do sort of on an ongoing basis.
Yes. Yeah, that pavement management study and Friendswood Parkway traffic impact analysis, I think that that would be a very good thing for the 500,000 dollars because it does something for the streets, did it?
So what we could do within that 500,000, we can fund the 2023 Hazard Mitigation Grant Scoping Project for Burgadune. We can fund the, the recodification of the city's code for 26,000, the pavement management study at 100,000, and then the 315,000 traffic study for Friendswood Parkway. Moving on, and the mayor was alluding to this earlier, there's a lot of talk as to, hey, you have a bank account and you have 17 million in it, and it fluctuates based upon when property taxes are paid and sales tax receipts come in and so on and so forth. That 17,000 or 17,385 is our fund balance at the start of the fiscal year, October 1, 2022. We haven't had the audit completed, but that's the amount of money that we have in our, in our savings account, so to speak. There are non-spendable prepaid items that need to be set aside by law of 260,000. There are peg dollars that come out of that 17 million dollars that, right now that running tab is 351,000. You approved, you have a budget amendment item right now that took it from 460 down to the 351 that you have on the screen today. We have to set aside a 90-day emergency policy. Our financial advisor in the room would have a heart attack if I told you we weren't going to do that because we, we leverage that when we go out to the rating agencies for these debt issuances, and they, they like to see that you have the ability to take care of things if a rainy day were to occur. And that's, that grows each year. So as our general fund grows, our 90-day reserve grows, and this year that estimate is 7.9 million dollars. We have the 500,000 dollars per street that's set aside. We have prior year encumbrances for purchase orders. So there's a number of activities that we execute a contract, we open up a purchase order for services, and it exceeds one calendar or one fiscal year to the next. We can't just carry those dollars over. We have to close out those purchase orders and reopen them the following year. From 2022 to 2023, that equated to 3. nearly 4 million dollars. Prior year unencumbered capital, these are projects that we started in one fiscal year that didn't come, get completed that fiscal year. So you have to make sure the revenues or the funds are there to pay those bills once we get them completed. That's about 1.2 million dollars. And then we advanced grant funds to purchase those buyout lots that Samantha was referring to in fiscal year 22 of 654,000. So our remaining balance at the end of all of that is roughly 3 million dollars. Since October 1 of this year and tonight's council meeting, we have approved eight budget amendments that totaled 2.8 million dollars. Now, that 2.8 million is inclusive of grant funds that we have advanced. We have about 2.1 million that's out, that's standing right now that we're anticipating reimbursement from the state for. We also have things like the tennis courts or things like the activity roof building that we had to replace, things that weren't necessarily expected, but as the, an incident occurs and we need to address it, we have to address it. And if we don't address it, obviously those costs continue to, to grow. Budget amendment number nine includes PEG channel that, and some Black Hawk shelter expenses of 122,000. So our fund balance at the end of the day, with all those deductions is 83,000. And then we still intend before this fiscal year is out to complete our fire station two, furniture fixtures and equipment, the Black Hawk shelter expenses, and the senior program van that's on the agenda later tonight of roughly 881,000. So if you look at the, the running tab with all these deductions right now, we're a little under 800,000 below our emergency reserve, but we're getting reimbursement, John, dailies, don't worry about that.
We're having a bake sale later too, so.
And a golf tournament.
Golf tournament, yeah.
No, but I, I, I shared this slide just to illustrate the point that we have 17 million in the bank, but there are prior obligations, it's spoken for. Potential budget reductions, at the retreat, y'all asked for us to come up with a list of items that we can potentially cut and forego in the following year. We have presented you in this slide, a, a list of items that totaled nearly a million dollars, which would allow for a property tax rate cut of nearly a penny. So it's nothing to scoff at, but obviously a, a number of these things are near and dear to somebody's heart and they are, they're, they're, they're in there for a reason with prior councils. I can go into this slide a little bit more detail if you would like, or if you have any questions about any particular item, and we can go from there.
Is it in any particular order?
No, sir. I, I did not do that to pick on mayor and council intentionally, but that just happens to be at the top of the list.
So these are not cuts that y'all made before you presented the budget to us?
Correct. Those were included in the, this slide.
That one right there, we just didn't know what they were. Okay.
What I, what I was going to, on that, that 35,000 economic development, the reason I asked about that earlier is because, you know, you think about gathering in more business and all that, and you got to start building up obviously that area to attract businesses and bring that department back. So do you know when we're going to try to get that area going back again?
Well, I will say that both Steve and Ray, our assistant city manager, and Aubrey Harbin, our community development director are doing a fantastic job, and I don't intend to fill that role anytime soon. But there are, there are ancillary costs that aren't personnel that are involved in that 35,000, which include advertising and local publications, they include the database that we have. So if a prospective business owner wants to come to Friendswood and they want to know what the demographics are financially, what our traffic counts are, what the available resources are here to locate Friendswood, available lease spaces, what have you, we have all that data base on our website. And that 35,000 goes to support the maintenance cost and the service fees for those software vendors to have those, that data point in place. A lot of times, for instance, if a fast food restaurant wants to locate in Friendswood, they want to know your traffic counts and your population in a five mile radius, irregardless, and that may not be a word, regardless of, of jurisdictional boundaries. So we have that data and information available to them with these services that are funded in that, that 35,000.
Yeah, no, and they do, yeah. I deal with a lot of these chains and yeah, they look at some crazy data on the way these, the traffic studies go.
Yes, sir. The mowing and field maintenance is highlighted simply because we don't have an exact figure there. The, the 700 plus thousand that's currently being spent includes the buyout lots, includes all of our park facilities and weekly mowing at each of the park facilities. Now, if we were to go to a lesser frequency, whether that's every other week, or if it's once a month, whatever the case may be, it's not a linear equation. So the, the price quote that we get, and we only get our price quotes when we go out to bid. So it's not as if I can say, I can go negotiate with one vendor and say, hey, what would you, what would you charge me for X? They'll give me a price, but at the end of the day, whatever I decide in scope, I have to go out to bid, and whatever those bids are, I'm at the mercy of whatever those bids are. So I will say the vendor had raised some concern that if they're not going out weekly, it may take them longer to service a particular park because they're spending more time cutting the grass back. You have it at your own home. If you mow every week, it's easier to mow once a week than it is if you wait every two weeks because the grass is higher. There will be a saving that, it's not a one for one savings that I can give you an exact figure on just now. Water sewer fund forces at work and decision packages, this is not funded by the general tax fund, tax, property taxes, this is paid for by your utility bills. There are operational cost increases at our wastewater treatment plant that we don't quite have the number on just yet, but they will go up. The Gulf Coast Authority has already notified us of it. We have insurance increases on our water sewer facilities that we anticipate at about 50,000. And then the items on the screen below merit for our water sewer funded employees as well as vehicle replacement and storm, severe storm grant generator. We're purchasing a generator as, as, as a result of the winter weather that we experienced a couple of years back, but it's not enough to pay for the generator itself, so we have to supplement it, much like any of these other initiatives. Someone comes to us and says they want to partner with us, fantastic, how can we leverage our dollars? But it's still not free for us. We have to add money to it. And then after we add money to it, we have to maintain it moving forward. So there's a cost associated with that. And that is it. Do y'all have any direction or questions?
Great job, Marad, as always. Katina, you and Rhonda, the rest of you are, are doing a fantastic job and keep, keep doing it. We're, we're looking forward to those numbers and, you know, we've got our fingers crossed that maybe we're a little too conservative, but we'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now I suggest we take a little break, real quick, five minutes.
Sounds good.
Come back. Let's continue with item eight, city manager's report presented by Marad Kabiri, our city manager.
All right, mayor and council, as I've already been long-winded earlier tonight, I will be quick. We are starting the Movies in the Park series this Friday. There are five family-friendly movies that will take place, four at the Evelyn Newman Amphitheater at Centennial Park. I don't have an exact start time because it depends on when the sun sets, but it's a fun activity for all. There will be food vendors out there for you to get some food and refreshments during the evening. Summer reading challenge has started. We have 1,100 kids and teens already signed up. The challenge runs through August 12th with various events and programs to promote more, I hope that's right, more reading, reading, reading more. I need to read more. And if you're interested in having your, your child sign up, the website's on the screen, but it's our Friendswood Library website. The last item, I actually have two items, one more that's posted, the water line breaks as we have this time of year, every year, we have a lot of shifting in our soils, especially as dry as it's been, and we've had a number of water line breaks that Renee and his team have been out 24 hours a day. In some cases, they were out eight hours this past Saturday on a water line break that, they don't have a choice but to address it as quickly as possible. And so I applaud his and his team's efforts and just ask folks to be patient if we have to shut somebody's water off in the interim while we work on something. It's just a necessary result of that effort.
As it gets hotter and it dries up, the ground dries up more, we can, you know, probability of having breaks goes up, right?
Correct. And we are, as we get new lines put in place, we do go in with PVC piping or C900 pipes that are a little bit more flexible. A lot of these line breaks, the old sewer lines were either clay or concrete, and they, they tend to be a little bit more fragile. Lastly, I would like to recognize our illustrious police chief. Bob, can I have you come up to the audience? So he may not look a day over 69, but this, this Friday, he, he has a milestone birthday. He turns 70, and actually he's in better shape than a lot of us are.
We need to cut the tape on that.
Uh, yes. I will let you open it, chief.
You sure?
Don't scratch it.
Don't scratch it.
I, I will say before you unveil it, this was Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Wirtz's idea. So any, any suggestions or concerns you can share with him?
I mean, I'm just a speaker. That will be right.
Hey, you know, you know why we chose that, right? Because it's always Chief Weiner's way.
What I do know is the spirit is to give and not receive. There are several people who have birthdays immediately after mine, and unfortunately some have been gifted Mount Rushmore at their house. Renee, I will take care of you tomorrow at the cemetery.
Did you, did you get a picture?
Katie, you don't want to girth the air hole that she applies.
Thank you, Marad. Excellent. Are we in any trouble for not posting that item, Aaron? We're okay? All right. Item nine, business item 9A, consider the election of the mayor pro tem. And as we do every year, we, at this time, we, we rotate the, the job of mayor pro tem. Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Wirtz has had the job this past year, done a magnificent job, by the way. Thank you, Brent, for all your suggestions along the way. You know, it's, it's a, it's a heavy burden that the mayor pro tem carries around here, and we expect you to have good ideas. Robert's looking at me like, what do you mean? Because when he was the mayor pro tem, I never saw him, but no, no.
I've never missed anything.
Everybody, everybody did a great job, and everybody on this council has served as a mayor pro tem for me, except for one person. So to my next statement, do I have a nomination for the mayor pro tem?
Yeah, I'd say Councilman Rocky.
Second.
We don't need a second nomination.
You have to read it or he's going to-
Let's see, any other nominations? Councilmember Rocky is nominated. Okay.
Please stay healthy.
Hearing none, nominations are closed. I'll now call for the vote. Those in favor of Councilmember Rocky serving as mayor pro tem, please raise your hand. Anybody opposed? All right, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Rocky. Hey, come out front, we'll get a picture. Celebrate your last year.
I was making mayor pro tem ones that were whatever.
Oh, well, your second time around.
Let's do it with the-
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Oh, they already put it up, huh?
That's quick, huh? All right, that's awesome.
All right, three, two, one, six.
Sweet. Congratulations.
And I'll take over the, Robert's Rules of Order.
Good.
Yeah, right, that'll be good.
That'll be better.
That would be good.
That'd be a lot better. All right. Item 9B, consider authorizing an agreement with PaveCon LTD Limited Company for fiscal year 23, 24, striping maintenance through the inter-local purchasing system. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Aaron Wirtz?
Second.
Councilmember Hanks? Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thanks, Hill. Item 9C, consider concurring with the city manager's appointment of Terry Prindle as the city direct, city's director of information technology. Do I have a motion on this item?[1761.57]
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocky, Councilmember Grifon? I have a motion, a second. Do you want to tell us anything about Mr. Prindle or?
Sure. Mr. Prindle will be joining us from the city of Fitchburg, Wisconsin. He's been in the IT field for over 25 years and is bringing in wealth and knowledge to our department. In accordance with the charter, I'm seeking your concurrence on his appointment. I do want to take this opportunity, of course, though, to thank Mr. Jim Greenwood, our current deputy director that has served his interim and will continue to serve his interim through the rest of July for his services. We couldn't have done it without him as well.
So I guess nobody from Baytown applied?
Nobody from Baytown applied. No, sir.
Too soon? What do you mean?
For this role, just to reemphasize the collaborative nature that we have in this organization, IT touches every single department. Every department was represented, represented in the initial interviews. They went through 102 applications for IT director. So there was a lot of interest in this job. And when the, when the pool got narrowed down to three, Stephen and I interviewed the final three, so.
Everybody wants to work in Friendswood.
They do.
Well, that's great. I have a motion, a second. All in favor? Okay, seven, nothing. Proposed Resolutions And Ordinances. 10A, Consider An Ordinance Amending The City's General Budget For Fiscal Year '22, '23 By Approving Budget Amendment 11 And Providing For Supplemental Appropriation And/or Transfer Certain Funds.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Grifon, Councilmember Aaron Wirt, all in favor. At 10B, Consider An Ordinance Authorizing The Issuance And Sale City Of Friendswood, Texas General Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2023, Levying An Annual Ad Valorem Tax For The Payment Of Said Bonds, Approving An Official Statement And Paying Agent Registrar Agreement, Approving Engagement Of Bond Counsel And Enacting Other Provisions Relating To The Subject. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Matranga, John Robuck, do you want to come up and bring Nikki with you, if you like? And our bond counsel?
Mayor and councilmembers, I've got a 55-page presentation to give.
No, we just want the good news. You can cut to the last page.
You got a couple of hours, if you don't mind?
No, no.
This is Nikki Hill. She's your bond counsel. She's with McCall Park, Houston, Horton. And so we do have some good news. We did sell bonds today for you guys. First page is the bond buyer index. I like to always show this to you, give you an idea of what the administration is doing. The current rate is a 3.64% for general obligation bonds with a 20-year life. This is about 11 basis points higher than what it was last month when we came out to show you. So the rates have gone up, but we were able to secure a lower rate than what we showed you last time, and it actually saved about $965,000 in total interest cost, debt service interest cost. So on the far left is your debt service without the water and sewer debt and also without your capital leases. And then the new bonds, 30 million we sold, principal, interest, and total, then the resulting total debt service there on the far right. And then sourcing use of funds. We sold 29,775,000 in bonds. We had a net premium. Investors paid more par for the bonds, 541,000, less cost of issuance of 316,000, generates the proceeds of $30 million y'all received upon closing. All cost register rate was a 4.364%, and the average life was in 19.13 years. And then upon your approval tonight on July 10, we will work with the, actually, Nikki's gonna work with the attorney general, get the bonds approved to the Attorney General's office. It will close on August 8, at which point you'll receive your funds. I'd be happy to ask you questions.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Rocky.
I was asked this the other day. How does somebody buy our bonds if they want to buy them?
You have to go through your broker. Yes, sir.
Oh, you're looking for business?
Sally will find the cuss-up number for you, and then she will put in the order.
But in fairness, and he will back me up on this, many times it never makes it to the retail side because the institutional side picks it up. So it's very seldom that I get a Friendswood bond, but I would love to have some Friendswood bonds to sell.
Actually, retail has priority. So if you put in orders, you get priority to get the bonds. But it is on the day of price, you have an hour and a half order period. And so usually, you have to put the order in well advanced without knowing what the yields are. And our goal is to make sure the yields are too low, you don't want them.
So my phone number is, no.
Nikki, anything to add?
No, now at this point, once you all approve it, we will go through all the documents, get everything up to the Attorney General's office and work with them over the next few weeks to get it approved.
All right, well, all in favor of approving this? It's approved.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. 10C, Consider A Resolution Adopting A Grand Marshall Selection Policy. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmember Hanks, Mayor Pro Tem Rocky, motion is second. Any discussion? Anybody want to talk about this? Want to ask a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just curious. So in this, with this form, because we've had, you know, how long have we had the parade?
Turn your mic on.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Should know better.
You have to be able to read.
I got, I got everybody else to read for me, though.
Yeah, got helpers.
So one of the questions, I mean, there's a lot of things we do recently coming through a campaign where you have to get petition of signatures and so forth to just to get on the ballot. My, my question here was, when I looked at the form, it was just somebody could just fill out a form or somebody fill out somebody else. I didn't see a line for references. I thought it might be helpful if, because this could be somebody not in Friendswood. So my only comment in reading the form was, and it's not a have-to-do, but would it make sense to have a place to put like, hey, three Friendswood residents? Something, because this person has to be tied to Friendswood in some way. But I thought it would be helpful to have just,